All right, everybody. This is the City Council Workshop for the city of Bonnie Lake on November seven, 2023. If you could all stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Chair, could you call the role, please?
Mayor McCallum. Deputy Mayor Carvin.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin. Is.
Here.
Is present.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember McLehman.
Here.
Councilmember Swammen.
Present.
Councilmember Watson.
Here.
All right, we have a full house. That's, that's good. All right, we'll move on to open discussion. Anybody? Councilmember Barnes.
So I went to the probably last meeting of the, not the last meeting, but we have the total for the Capitol Facilities Advisory Committee from Bonnie, our first sonder by my lake school district. So they're trying to figure out what to do. They're looking at some transportation improvements that affects Lion Lake. They're looking at phase two of the high school in summer. They're looking at a new middle school for the Holly area, a lot of field upgrades through the summer of Bonnie Lake and Holly, some major programs. They're looking at a traffic improvement for Blimey High School and they're looking for some land to put a pool. You know, so the opportunities that Bonnie Lake has there could be, you know, placing part of Midtown, right, for a pool, right, or which should be positive. Or I, you know, I think we could also consider the intersection improvement. We could make that a one-way road to the office.
And then a one-way road, the other way, right?
That's interesting considering they, they closed a pool that was open for like thirty years, something along those lines, not too long ago. They talked about putting a pool up here on the plateau or?
Well, it's, it's staged. The pool is currently in the plan for the second phase of the high school. There's a lot of pressure to put the pool on the plateau because between Calaway and Bonnie Lake, that would drive much more use, right?
Oh, yeah.
Pools that are used are less. You get a, the more that you can keep the pool used, the more return or the less money you lose on it. So by having it on the plateau, it's, it's more feasible to keep it running effectively.
Oh, absolutely.
Putting it in summer with some of the discussion they had. And it's a pretty big, there, it's a pretty big pool. It would qualify for swimming, water polo and diving. So it's not a pool that's down there now, which doesn't qualify for those.
Outdoor or indoor?
It would be indoor.
Okay. All right, anybody? Councilmember Watson?
Thank you. We've got a couple of things just to make aware. October eighteenth, I attended the open house of Public Safety Building for the recreation and trails program that Jason, their presentation on and his Southside staff. There's only interested about thirty-five people attended. They're asking lots of questions. So you have a lot of constituents are involved concerning what we're doing with the trails in our parks. So they were asking lots of questions, a good conversation with all of them and good presentation. Is that going to be coming to us sometime here as a council or not?
It's item B on me.
Yeah, definitely. My presentation, I thought it was tonight. And I don't know if it's the same thing or different. And also November second, I attended the CFF meeting and Jason was there again with Wesley and Kennedy. And they did a presentation of Bonnie Lake Comprehensive Plan for up to twenty forty-nine. So look out a hundred year anniversary for us. So obviously Jason may not be here at that time, but talk about what the city can do and what we should do and things for us to talk about ourselves in the future where we want to be at that time in the future. And let you know also at the CFF discussed the Christmas giving will, the toy box will be handled by the Toys for Tots this year. They're taking care of that program for us. And that's about all I have.
Was Mr. Sullivan there too?
No, he wasn't.
Oh, okay. All right, anybody else? Okay, so you know, from the discussion, we will move on to our presentation. We do have a presentation on parks, trails and recreation and open space plan. Mr. Sullivan, before you, could you change it for me?
I did. We tried to change it for everybody and be like four thousand people's.
Good job.
What they're wanting. So we're gonna, we're gonna kind of walk through this. So as we get the power pump slide pulled up and the screen shared, I'm gonna, I have a couple of things. One, I'm gonna introduce Scott. He is part of the consulting team with MX and Land Safety Architects. They did a lot of the design work on the actual designs that we're presenting tonight. The second part is, is kind of built on each other. So I would request, you know, politely request, let us get to the end of the presentation. We can circle back the slides if we need to, but they kind of build on each other. So let's get through the presentation and then we can answer questions, provide more input, you know, take any comments the City Council has, but just so that we're more efficient with our time, let's get through this presentation. And then we can also start, we can always circle back to the specific slide that we come to do. So as you know, the council authorized us to sign a contract earlier, earlier this year to prepare a new parks, trails, recreation, open space plan. And it was important that this plan did not look at a single park in its individuality, but we looked at the park system as a whole and the needs of the city. And we've done a bunch of public outreach, which, which Scott will get into. But this is kind of the next step where we're going to present the conceptual designs. This is not the, the council's going to approve it. We've got to go back through a whole bunch of public hearings and then we'll be bringing this for council approval sometime in the first quarter of 2024. So this is just kind of a check-in with the council to let you know kind of what we've heard and how we have taken the thousands of comments we've gotten and tried to do something for everyone, knowing that we can't do everything for everybody. So it was tried, it was tried to compromise and look at all of the different things that the community is wanting and finding places to put all of the items. So with that, I will turn it over to Scott with MX and Architecture.
Great. Thanks so much, Jason. It's good to be back with you this evening. Of course, I was here earlier this year and we were talking at that time about some broader ideas for Outnert Park in particular. But as Jason outlined there, you know, part of what's really, I think, a special opportunity about this effort right now is that you all have a chance to be looking at your overall park system and open spaces there while also asking the public for what they want from the most important of those parks and the significance of those parks. And we can kind of feed that into these kinds of schemes. So I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the project overview, just as a reminder of what this PTO plan entails. Share with you a bit about what we've heard so far because as Jason said, it's been really fantastic. We've been able to reach out to people so many different ways and got so much feedback. And then really the meat of today's discussion is sharing with you the current status essentially of these park site concept plans. And I like to emphasize that these are still, are still nine, you know, you know, just within the last seventy-two hours, we're receiving feedback and implementing that. I'm sure there will continue to be some adjustments even through this final couple of months. And then of course, we can have our discussion. So the next slide, Jason. So just as a reminder, you know, this PTO plan is a chance for you all to be looking ahead and developing a twenty-year vision that can help guide decision-making, in particular in regard to these parks, trails and recreational spaces. And as I said a moment ago, it's really fantastic that we're not doing that only at the high systems level, but also that we're digging into some of the particular sites because that doesn't always happen, but here we're going to do that. Just a reminder, the timeline, as Jason outlined earlier, the team really got going on, on base work, et cetera, earlier this year. And here we are. Of course, we're already in November and I say thank you for having me on. I know it's a pretty important day and evening for many of you here already in the beginning of November. And we're really at the stage now of translating the feedback that we've heard into actual designs that then we find it's really important to have a few cycles of, you know, visualize that with, with folks, receive additional feedback and integrate that into what will be the target of these plans. So thanks, Jason. So as you all know, you know, Bonnie Lake has just tremendous resources and that's something that you'll see in the feedback from the public, that people really appreciate these open space resources here within the city, you know, whether that's, you know, the lakefront on Lake Tap, whether that's, you know, concerts at All Year Park, you know, something special and unique like Victor Falls or indeed activities at the senior center. Next. And of course, there's also, you know, this more specific kind of activities and program, especially as far as recreation, whether it's playgrounds, cycling, or just a nice walk along Federal Creek. Next. So the community outreach, so this has taken on many different forms over the last really six or so months. There was the kicking things off. There's a, a large-scale survey that went out. There's been open houses both in-person and online. Most recent in-person open house just a few weeks ago. We also have been meeting with individual stakeholder groups, which have been terrific, and a steering committee that's been involved all along the way. And then from my perspective, the, the most kind of enriching outreach experience has been through the tabling and direct feedback we received over the summer, which really works so well because you all have so many summer activities, especially within and regarding these parks. It would give me people where they're at and get their feedback. And so you see there over ninety participants so far. Next. At a high level, what we hear is that folks really like their parks and they really like a whole range of amenities. And which is to say, there's general support for really everything we could throw at people. What's interesting to me is that there wasn't so much, the tone of it from my perspective, wasn't so much about complaining about what's on offer or not. It's more about seeing the potential for the future. So that was great to receive at a high level and then we, we'll get into more detail about particular parks in a moment. Next. Some core themes that really rise to the surface and I think these are the kinds of things that we could be even imagining ahead of time, but we certainly were hearing that directly from, from individuals, you know, at the very start of things, you know, at the very least, take care of what you have and make improvements, whether that's for amenities or whether that's for just things like ADA compliance to those existing resources. But then still continue to build out the system, especially for you all, you're quite rich in the number and range of sites that you have within your system. And so there's a lot of potential just to fully utilize what you already have allocated as park space. And then of course, expanding with the recreational opportunities, which really is speaking to the particular kind of activities that are supported and in our program, this term that we use in our, in our world, there within those park spaces. Next. So we're gonna walk through now four parks that we've looked at in more detail. And the, the combination here, we'll, we'll look at things, kind of summarize the feedback that we heard and then you'll see how we've started to translate that into a design. So Outnert Park is, is the one that we really have to start with because it's just so important and yet it also has so many challenges, which we previously discussed earlier this year and which you all know only too well. We took that scheme that we had showed to you about rerouting Wesley Capes Highway and showed that back up to the public. And I have to say that we generally heard really, really positive feedback. There are particular notes as far as, you know, questions about how or how where that, that rerouting would happen, stop sign versus roundabouts, traffic flow, parking, these kinds of things, like all valid concerns. They're really supportive feedback. And then we were able to really focus in on then, not so much that initial question, but really then with that rerouting, what do they want to see improved upon and supported within the park? So that pie graph there, what you've seen are a lot of feedback about water play in general, but then also spray park in particular being something that is added here. Spray parks come up multiple times. I have, I'll give you a preview. We conducted this during the summer. But, but spray parks certainly have risen to the surface in so many communities in our region as being really especially valuable as a safe place to cool down and play for a range of ages. Also particular activities like movies in the park and, and other kinds of things that build off of that tradition of the concert series that you all have been conducting. And then of course, existing facilities there within Outnert Park that are ready for upgrades, you know, the restroom building concessions, et cetera. So as we take that feedback, we go to the next slide, Jason. Here, we'll, we'll zoom into this in a moment. This is our attempt to kind of translate that into a plan and, and figure out the relationships for how more these improvements might be made. So we go to the next slide. We'll zoom into the core of this area. And so you see the rerouting of, of the highway where we're intentionally really having that hug the existing tree line. So we're not having to remove too many trees, but then the whole point of that really is to open up the connections to the waterfront. So we don't have that congestion and kind of bottleneck that's there right now. And then we have for the first time, this, this open canvas to work with for this range of amenities. We have kind of working through that area along the waterfront. We still have beach volleyball. We have increased access to the lake. We have additional picnic shelters. One idea that came out of conversations with staff was about having a chance to actually change that relationship to the lake where with this rerouting, with the kind of more space that's available, potentially even having a beachfront where we can, we can make use of that, that space because we'd have the gray to have an accessible point of access into the water. And then we're locating the spray park and improve playgrounds there in the vicinity of the waterfront, knowing that that's where we have this kind of critical mass activities, but giving it all room to breathe. Moving out to the left, to the west, you see that in this scheme, we're showing an improved covered performance space that is, that's essentially oriented in a very similar way to what is currently in place and where there's already current kind of norms and, and kind of habits of how that's, how that operates. And then we have that large lawn that's available as, as such flexible use. I'll, I'll tell you that there's an earlier version of the scheme where we had that performance stage closer to the waterfront, thinking that maybe the performer would be looking to the west. But what we realized is that, especially in talking with staff, that, you know, these concerts, there's a few thousand people. And if these are, all these improvements made for those concerts, there's going to be even greater desire we out there. Plus, you know, having made multiple visits this summer during a range of events, really we could see how actually just having flexible use lawn in that kind of area gives you so many opportunities for different sorts of events. The rerouted road works its way up. We have the roundabout that then people can spin off to the west, east or to the north, where the existing parking lot is, it's just improved for standard parking. And then you see that there's an improved multi-sport ball field in the upper right corner there, in the northeast corner. And here, this is really thought of as, as a way of building off of the success, what we, what I interpret as being a success of your recent improvements that are on our park to the southeast and doing something similar where there's a concentration of a wider range of uses. Finally, up to the west, we have some of those existing facilities and surfaces, let's say, that are converted over to parking, including some areas that would be for trailer parking during the voting season.
I just wanted to, as part of this, we are proposing and we have been talking with Cascade Water Alliance about relocating the boat launch to the south, where you would have basically two launch, two launches and two retrieval slips. So it's just a little bit more efficient. None of that access for the boat launch is happening on the road. So we're not having people trying to turn around and get into the boat launch on the road. Currently, the way it's designed is the current parking lot that is up there is basically when the launch is operating is where the truck, the vehicular queuing and trailer queuing would occur. There's enough space for them to be completely off the road to do all their maneuvers. And the way we designed this, knowing that during concerts in the park, David shuts the boat launch down. When that boat launch is shut down, that space is going to be left as its same width. So it can be used as additional overflow parking for those large concert events. So you're not losing the parking for the large concert events, but you're solving the boat queuing issue. The current boat launch area would be repurposed with fishing docks and then a boat slip for the police department and a boat slip for Cascade Water Alliance for their boat. And then we, like I said, we have the repurposed boat launch to the south. We're not expanding the parking for the boat launch to keep the capacity issue adjusted, but it would just allow for a more efficient operation of that boat launch in the evening for retrievals. The other part is down to the south of the park. There's a new intersection, what we call a tabletop intersection, which basically acts as another traffic slowing. We are intentionally trying to slow traffic because it is the park. So we are putting lots of things in that will force the vehicle speeds down and hopefully discourage regional cut-through traffic. And then south of there, there's another parking lot that trail where the de-camp facility is currently at. There's another parking lot there that would be constructed with a trail over to Field Five. So you would have additional parking for larger events at Field Five. So I just wanted to touch on those last items.
Yeah, thank you for that, Jason. Especially, you know, how easily I can get caught up in all these improvements to the park I've mentioned. Well, just the start of it all. And then improvements to the boat launch, of course. All right. And then maybe just a last note on that slide of Jason. And that image in the lower left, here you're just getting the image in the lower left beginning a glimpse as you work your way towards that, that improved waterfront where you have the spray park and a, and a turf can. You kind of squint your eyes and think of that in contrast to what we see right now as you're, as you'd be crossing the highway and entering into, entering over to the waterfront. We go to the next slide. Here, just really briefly, these sections, you know, landscape architects are all these sections all the time because we're able to see how space is allocated. And essentially what we're seeing here is how in the image above, which is the current condition, that portion of the beachfront is of course really constrained, as you all know. And then in the lower image, we're seeing how with the, the realignment of the road, we now have so much space to work with and also then for the experiences of this versus the park. So, so as Jason said, we'll, we'll talk in more detail about the, these individual parks at the end. So we'll shift gears and move over to Midtown Park. And so with Midtown, yeah.
Sorry, I just wanted, I, I wanted to provide a little bit of background on Midtown, just so when we get through this, you'll understand kind of some of the constraints that we were working with. So Midtown Park was given to the city as part of both a development agreement and an environmental impact, as mitigation, as part of an environmental impact study that was done for the laws of forests when we got that development agreement done in two thousand and nine. One of the items that was identified as a, as a significant environmental impact for which mitigation needed to be identified was the loss of kind of the demonstration of the tree canopy associated with it for both habitat reasons or another reason. The EIS specifically called out that what the mitigation measure would be the preservation of twenty-four acres of tree canopy. Two of those would be done through the donation of like what they call the triangle park, which is at the corner of two fourteenth and South Prairie, whenever that residential development occurred. And the other twenty-two point six acres would basically be within Midtown Park. So we are limited to how much of Midtown Park we can actually clear because of that environmental analysis. So withstanding all of the public comments, because there was comments on every side of this, that is one thing that we're constrained with is preserving at least twenty-two point six acres of tree canopy within that site. So that was one of the constraints that we were working with in addition to the public comments that we received. In addition to a large public, a long, a large portion of the public, as you can see by the pink sphere, really wanting us to maintain tree canopy at Midtown Park because it's one of the only two forested areas that have public access within the city. And so there's up and down on that, but there's still that desire. So that I'll turn over Scott for the rest of the kind of.
Before we turn over back over to Scott, I want to know about the environmental impact as far as that acreage. Is, is that solely with the forty acres that, that we have to work with or can any of that acreage be included in the Terragon property? Sixty acres over there?
There's part that's in Terragon. Out of a hundred and, I want to say seventy-ish acres that made up that project.
Right.
A hundred and three could be cleared. We already cleared a big chunk when we cleared Costco. The development agreement did not require the developer to do the tree mitigation on their site because it was called out as the EIS is partially as doing it on the city site.
Okay. And it was part of that, part of the negotiations with, that we've been doing with Terragon?
No, that was all back in oh nine.
Okay. So, all right.
So it was just one of the constraints, regardless of the public opinion, which there was a large outcry to want us to maintain that tree canopy. But I think we came up with something that checks all the boxes. I hope.
Yeah, let's see. I, I agree. Yeah, but thank you for that helpful context. And I think that with that background that Jason described, plus kind of just knowing what you all know of, of being in, or at least in the vicinity of Midtown Park, you know, this is a space that where there's something of a challenge of having to kind of imagine such a different future for it. But I'm really encouraged by the positive feedback we heard from folks. They imagine the feedback of how they could see this being transformed in the future and then, and then what we're, what we're developing right now. So here, as regards feedback, you see things like that, that large wedge in the upper right about nature and trails. And I think folks really see there's an opportunity to make the most of this condition. It's not often that you have, well, one, such a large park that's not yet developed at all, or two, such a large park that has so many relatively mature trees. And so that's part of the feedback we see. Something like the restaurants, I think my interpretation of the request for restaurants is really an interest in seeing that kind of critical mass of activities where, where people would feel safe there, where their people would be around other people with a range of activities throughout the day, throughout the seasons. Again, spray park, this is a location that is in some, in many ways, really quite, quite accessible and we have so much room to work with. That's a great spot. And of course, great park. There's an interest for that. And then particular things like pickleball and disc golf. So with pickleball, again, it's really as much as anything, a matter of space and access. But disc golf, that's a, that's an activity in use that's really compatible with that mature canopy cover, coverage that we're wanting to maintain a good bit of. And so we're, we pull that all together in the scheme that you'll see. So if you go to the next slide, Jason. So here, here's a glance at Midtown Park. So just as orientation, Costco would be off to the upper left from the image here, north is up. You see that as a point of, also a point of orientation, the current road that is essentially, that's stubbed out on the northwest corner of Midtown is imagined to extend through the northern edge, potentially eventually across to the neighboring property to the right. And we see that as really the point of entry for folks into the park. There of course would still be pedestrian entrances along the southern border, but we know that for particular access, that's going to work especially well. The existing stormwater ponds, we really intentionally try to make the most of that and knowing that work has already been done as far as even just building those. And in our observation, you know, we've, even there's not a lot of users out there right now. There still are some and they really make use of that, that pathway that goes along the pond. So we see that as a great thing to have improvements made to, maybe it's even, you know, a harder surface and a softer surface for different kinds of activities. That's giving ourselves a loop that people can work their way through the park and kind of branch off to these other activities. Off to the west, that green wedge is, is built up a bit, has a bit of topo. So we see it as a great spot for some improved mountain slash dirt bike trails. And then there also was a request in particular for pump tracks. And we see that as something that can, can fit in really nicely in that very northwestern corner. This is, for those of you who are into pump tracks, that's kind of scaled off of the example in Leavenworth as an, as, yeah, as an example.
I don't know what a pump track is.
Yes, do I?
A pump track is basically, once you get on it, in theory, you could use your weight and gravity to maneuver yourself around the entire track without. It's a very big in the biking, the biking and we've been getting, I guess, requests for it done for over a decade for trying to find a location for a pump track somewhere in the city. And we found a weird little corner of this park that there wasn't a lot of use to, that it fit perfectly. So we found it, we found a home for it.
Well, I'm just glad it's right by the medical center. I had my horn attack. They can go right there. That's true. That's right.
It was just an emergency room up the street right there.
Yeah. No jokes, but still. Yeah. Okay. And so then, so we have that stormwater along, you know, along that, the, the right-hand side of the pond as you see here, we're seeing that as a great spot to cluster in these courts. And so initially, we had really devoted that all to pickleball courts. But we got feedback as far as we're being interested in just having more variety. So at the moment, it's being shown as a real cluster of pickleball courts, but then also one of these multi-court. multi-cores that we worked on in other parks for other municipalities where it could be tennis court or, and/or pickleball court, or even half courts of basketball, where maybe that under a shelter and it's protected from the rain and, and sun. And just offers that much more use throughout the year. We have a main trail that runs east-west. We have parking, you see that it comes off as these wings off of the northern access road. And our thought was to try to have the parking to be somewhat distributed. So folks who are going there for an afternoon of pickleball can be, you know, arriving relatively near to that destination. Also, you know, there's some grave change throughout the park. And we're wanting to make sure that we're, there's really minimal disturbance to that grave and especially the existing tree canopy. Up to the upper right, something that came out of conversations relatively early in this process with it, this could be a great spot for a kind of community center, a real community and senior center for, for the city. And so right now, that's located in that northeastern corner and, and no small part because that's a flat area and this is imagined to be a pretty large building if it were to happen. That's shown large, at the moment, that's shown as a 25,000 square foot footprint. Imagine that maybe it would be two-story. We're providing a whole range of amenities for folks and, and for different programs in the city. And then off to the north of that, you're seeing a kind of entry plaza. And there's this idea of there being, you know, if there's going to be a tree lighting ceremony, this could be the place for it. And, and so maybe out of the few trees that get removed, there's also one that's planted there for the community. As far as Spray Park playgrounds, playgrounds maybe especially there are kind of nature play oriented, given the context. Restaurant buildings, we see that as being in, in the vicinity of that community center, really kind of adding to the critical mass of that area. And then the, the bulk of that southeastern portion is, remains as existing tree canopy cover with trail improvements, where there can be this overlay of the disc golf course. Also, to the east, you see a dog park with both areas for small dogs and large dogs. Again, it's something that I think is really compatible with this relatively spacious park where we also could still maintain a lot of that tree canopy covered.
I, you have nine of this, but I'm counting, I'm guessing each one of those little dashed lines with a circle is?
Yeah, you know what, that's a good question. So what you're seeing there is, is, so we'll make sure that we have nine on dry land. And then our understanding is that the stormwater ponds were designed, were engineered to allow for at least some access and a potential use for the dry months. And so we laid it out to see that there's also for additional bonus nine holes in the stormwater ponds in that.
Oh, in the summer.
In the summer, yeah.
The summer could be 18 and the winter we go down to nine.
Yeah.
By limit. Because it's full of water.
They float later, they float.
Liability.
Yeah, and the pond was designed with slopes that didn't have to be fenced. Even in the development agreement and EIS when we did W S four, the idea was obviously we should some sort of double use out of that pond area. So the, the thought would be this would be a low-impact way and not having to do a lot of improvements. And when it's dry, it can be used and when it's wet, it's, you know, not used. But there's no fencing around the pond. It doesn't, it was designed with the slopes that people could walk in and out of it for that. And then also, one ideal for the community center is it would have two indoor basketball. That can be used for other things, but for, for rec basketball as well. So that, that's in the indoor senior center.
Yeah, and that was a, none of these free comments came directly to staff, you know, who run those programs to say like they could easily make full use of that. So we'll, I'm sure there will be some other discussion about Midtown, but this, this gives you an overview for that part. We go to the next slide, Jason. Again, can't help ourselves with these kind of things, but just giving you some sense of how these different elements kind of relate to each other, just imagining them in the context of that, that canopy coverage. I think especially the lower image there, which is a longer section. On the right of that, you're seeing the pickleball courts and pathways. And then that main path where we can imagine there being a lot of traffic and usage working as people walk around the stormwater ponds and then the stormwater ponds and that kind of scale. So yeah, so really trying to have these different elements build off of each other.
So one of our main thoughts when, as we designed this and looked at the sideboards and we looked at the comment was really how do we build a park that is simultaneously used by every member of the community? And seniors can be out there walking, they can be at the senior center. Kids can be playing on the splash park, there's kids playing pickleball, adults playing pickleball, seniors playing pickleball, basketball games going on both undercover and outside and indoors and at the community center. So it was really thought of how do we design a space that is used by every member of the community simultaneously in this design that we came up with.
Yeah.
So that will go to Victor Falls.
Yeah, so, so too small, but still important, only in parks. We'll talk just very briefly about Victor Falls and Cedar View. So, so Victor Falls, I mean, you all know that there's just, there are so many challenges there as far as access to the site itself and then access to having some kind of safe way of experiencing and doing things. And so we may be a little bit ahead of ourselves in what we showed the public. We showed a beautiful big suspension bridge, which people liked. We showed the suspension bridge to maintenance staff, they did not like it. But I think that we could at least take away some ideas there where there's some kind of feature that people are attracted to. And from there, they can have a safe viewing of the falls. So if we go to the next slide, I apologize, this is a little washed out here. But essentially what you're seeing in the upper right corner of the plan there, this plan is building up, is making the assumption that we're going to have the same point of access. You know, vehicles current in the same spot as they do now, have the same parking lot, as is currently shown. I know that there's some history there as far as limitations to improvements being made to that parking lot. But if we work off of that, the idea is that there could be basic improvements made there. There's a little bit more of an entrance that is shown to the park. Whether restaurants would be built or not, I don't know, but there certainly is an interest in that. Especially if this is a place where it's meant to be on offer for folks to stay with their families for a little bit longer, which is being supported by having picnic areas and small landscape improvements there adjacent to the parking area. And then the idea is that we have an accessible, inviting, safe pathway that runs along that, that ridge line where we can offshoot from it and have these, these viewpoints, these viewing decks that, that jut out flat from the hillside as the hillside drops away. And it could be viewpoints back to the falls and/or just to the valley below. Yep.
At one point, we did think about crossing over Fennel Creek, but after talking with Brian, the maintenance staff, and looking at the actual designs, there's lots of spring collection systems on the south side of the creek for our water system. So for water security, we did not add anything on the south side. On the south side.
Undoubtedly, there are many geographic things, but those spring collection boxes.
I mean, right, there's, there's.
Northing to that.
Well, yeah, there, there's some strong lines that kind of go along this area and we just wanted to keep. Keeping with, given all of that, we wanted, we didn't want to have people on that side of it.
I can't imagine anyone built a bridge practically. Jason.
Have you ever been to Africa or Alaska?
Yeah, I know, right? A couple of ropes were set. I don't know, but I. Did some talk years ago about having the trail all the way down to the valley from there. Not a very difficult area to cover, but that's what they, the county would like to have a rail trail both along the park and there and down to the ramp.
Yeah, the, the current, the current, the trail plan that we're working with is we would come up through Victor Falls Elementary School and make the crossing at a much safer location where the new falling water, Rose Lake Road crossings. Because you have a stoplight there, it's a much more improved intersection. And then in talking with the county, the current kind of thinking and exploration is Tahale will be building a whole new road off the backside of Tahale.
That, well, that was my question because the fact that we signed that tri-city agreement that went up to wash down as far as us developing, you know, the broader interest in that area that would go to 162nd and that did include roads, roads that grow.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a whole new road that's being built off the backside of Tahale. The thought processes is as they build that road, the improvements will be built along that right-of-way corridor. And it comes out right at 128 from the McCann Chamber images. And there's a single, a new roundabout going in there. And then right on the other side of 162 is the entrance to the footrest trail. So that's the, why we're not showing it here, it's kind of shifted south based on some, a number of safety issues.
Excellent. So. Great, yeah. Good questions and those are all elements that were in the discussions and even the.
Jason, you could hold all of the questions till the end of the.
Yeah. All right, next slide, Jason. And so here, just, just a reminder about, you know, what the, how dramatic the photography really is and what we have available to work with. Of course, it's, you know, largely invisible on-site right now. But here, you know, just wanting to visualize how, you know, a modest viewing deck, something that's really small in the plan has such a big impact as far as the effect and the experience. So let's go to the next slide. So then just wrapping things up and talking a bit about Cedar View. And so, you know, Cedar View, we really see this as, you know, what did it really be considered a neighborhood park? You know, serving just the broader community somewhat, but especially serving its most immediate community. The feedback that we received as far as support and interest in improvements really was all revolved around kind of having the same activities that are there right now, just supported a bit better with improved facilities. So certainly something like a restroom, improvements to the playground that, you know, existing playground is really probably being close to the end of its life. And then here, once again, seeing a potential for Spray Park. If that were to happen, I can imagine that having really a different character than the other Spray Parks, where it's a little bit more local and kind of integrated with the playground. So here you see that where we visualize how and where those improvements to the existing playground would be made, just as a reminder for where those are located in that, that yellow-orange color. And then the Spray Park scene that being built off of that, but importantly being built off of that in, on high ground that's a little bit dry. Originally Spray Park was located a little bit lower where maintenance staff told us that it never, ever, ever dries out there. And that's been a, that's spot for it. And then again, the spirit of kind of making improvements to existing facilities. So maybe that existing basketball court has some improvements, including a potential cover so it gets be used in the rain more easily. And then also that informal playground is having some improvements to the period of backstop and the length. So those, that's a tour of the parks. I think maybe Jason, you want to say a few words about kind of what this is all adding up to?
Yeah, so one of the things that we heard and we heard loud and clear from a lot of users is why it like is a big sports pad for, for a variety of sports. Soccer, lacrosse, football, rugby, basketball, volleyball, pickleball, tennis, disc golf. I mean, there was a lot of, of, kind of ask. And so one of the things that we want to do is kind of look at how sports fields or sports facilities are kind of being provided system-wide. And that's kind of what I led off of. Remember, this is a system-wide look at our parks and trail system, not kind of just focused on an individual park. And so what we did is we kind of went with both school facilities, which provides some of that recreational access and along with city facilities. So everything is kind of highlighted in a red box. There's a new facility that is getting added to the system. You will see the REED property listed. The reason the REED property wasn't in the presentation was MXN was not under contract to design that. There's a separate MOU that has been developed for that property, but it's still part of our park system. So as part of this system, we are going to be adding, right now they're showing the soccer fields, but there could, those could be multi-sport, but there's five of those. And I know there's different configurations, but there's five fields there. Plus we're putting a new turf field in Allen North Park. Plus two actual baseball fields, not just informal fields, but more defined fields. And you'll still have the kind of informal practice fields that you would have on the grass lawn now. You would still have the ability to do that as informal practice fields. We're also adding four pickleball courts in Allen York Park. At Midtown Park, there would be a total of six dedicated pickleball courts that covers court, court that Scott was talking about, which could have tennis, pickleball and basketball. That's why they're separated because it can be all of those simultaneously, but it does enhance two indoor basketball courts, disc golf, the dirt bike trail and also the pump track. And then at REED property, we have a number of five, five ball fields. So right now, with the kind of conclusion, everything gets built. The city between the city facilities and the, and the school district facilities would have about seven, I'm doing math, about 10, 10 of those kind of multi-sport courts within city property. And I remember in one of the meetings hearing that we need about 20. So we're providing half of those between the school district facilities and the park, and the park facilities. We would look to the county and the school district for parks outside of the city. The county does own 80 acres down by Tahale and they're doing a master planning process right now. And so there's a, there's an ability to add more fields there. So we're trying to find a way to look at this regionally and not put all of the burden or, or kind of impact on to the city taxpayers, but try to provide our proportional and share of those regional type facilities. So we would have about five, or about seven on city properties. And there would be about three on the school district facilities. And then the other ones, we would look to partner with the county and the school district on the new middle school out in Tahale, the 80 acres out in Tahale, to provide kind of that other relief for those deals. So trying to get to that magic number of 20 that we heard, but in a way that is kind of proportionally shared throughout the, the region. So that's kind of why we wanted to bring this, because we know sports are important. And when you're looking at the individual parks, it's kind of hard to see the whole. So we wanted to create a graph that showed, we looked at sports and we tried to find a way to put every single sport in a facility for every single person somewhere. Are we going to give everybody everything? No. But do we try to at least understand what the needs were and find a location for everything? We've got beach volleyball, basketball, tape boarding, tennis. We've covered, I think, everything. The only thing I would say is if the council really wants us to, based on Councilmember Plomin's question or comments earlier, to engage with the school district about providing an aquatic facility. Either as a separate building or a part of the communities that are in Midtown Park, it would fit in there. There is some space that we have left. So if the council wants us to engage with the school district to try to find a way to show a potential or an alternative that includes that, we are open to that. We just want to have a little bit of, not a vote, but at least some council head nodding so that we're not, we're not just going down on, based on kind of one, one, kind of one comment, but that's kind of the engagement. It would work, but it's something that we can explore. So with that, we can answer any questions, take any feedback. I can bounce back to any of the slides.
Take a moment, Paul.
Yeah, so I'm kind of wondering what's happening with the senior center in Allen York Park? Does that kind of disappear? Is the new one at Midtown going to be equivalent to what they have? I mean, obviously it's going to be newer and better, but will it be a larger facility if we put it at Midtown? And also the historical society? Have we determined where that group is going to be placed?
So answering your first part.
Can they be at the senior center? Can we get that like a museum area at the senior, senior center?
So to ask you the, kind of the first question, is this, the existing senior center stays in the plan. We didn't even remove it. It's, it is still there, right here. It's still in the plan, no plans to, to demolish it or take, do anything with it.
Okay.
If we were lucky enough to someday build a community center, the thought would be, because I know there's a desire to kind of get it more centrally located in the city, is that it would be built to have all the same things, a commercial kitchen, a meeting room, a lunch area, plus, because it would be a joint facility that would have a large two-court basketball court that could be used for larger activities, plus a commercial-grade kitchen, plus meeting rooms, plus breakout rooms, plus a large kind of dining, central dining room that can be used. So yes, in short, the theory would be, it would be and plus.
Okay.
Well, I want to bootstrap on the, on customer reporting's concerns here and ask a couple of pointed questions as far as the survey was concerned. Did we get any demographics on, on the survey that went out and the answers we got? Like age of people who actually answered it and the families? And everything, because it seems like right now, it's all pointed to, to younger families who have. And everything, because it seems like, right now, it's all pointed to, to younger families who have, who have younger children. And we, we're kind of putting the seniors as an afterthought here. And, and we're not catering to a wide demographic. We're catering to what came in on the survey. So, so I'd like to see the demographics as far as who answered what.
We can pull that. The demographics are only as good as if people wanted to answer those questions.
Mm-hmm.
But we did ask the demographic questions. On the survey, and I'll get back to you on the other question, Councilmember Baldwin. On, on the, we did a couple of things for the seniors. One, we specifically reached out to the Senior Center to see exactly what they need. One of the representatives from the Senior Board.
Advisory.
Advisory Board was on the Stakeholder Committee to help design the plans. So they were part of their providing feedback kind of for the senior group on, on that. When we did both the open house and the public outreach at Allen York Park, we were set up right next to, I forget who was, I think it was the Senior Center.
For most of, for a couple of the time.
Yeah. And the questions we were asking, we had a specific question of what do you want out of senior facilities? And, and the biggest thing we got was more space. More space in pickleball, I think, were the, were the top.
Wow.
You know, recreational programming, yes, there's lots of requests for recreational programming, but that's recreational programming that include, goes in the facility. So the big thing for the seniors that we were getting was a larger facility. One of the stories we got was when they're doing childcare day at the Senior Center, they have to do that in the same lunchroom that they're serving meals.
Right.
Right.
Right, and so the thought was if we could build that community center and have meeting spaces and classrooms, and then a lunchroom separate, you could run those facilities kind of in private and you could have actually classes going on while you're serving meals. So we tried to, I mean, I, we can get you the demographics, Mayor, but we did specifically have targeted questions about what seniors want in their park system. As I said, we tried to say, what is the community?
And how about areas of the city where we got the most response from?
Areas, we don't know. We do have, we did ask that question, we had four quadrants we divided, and we can provide that breakdown.
Right. Yeah, I would be very interested.
Yeah, I will find, I would have those survey results, I just have to pull them up and I can email you links to all.
I appreciate that.
And then back to the Historical Society there. The current modular building that is right here, that's part of the proposed lease that has not been signed, is still protected for that move of the Historical Society to modular. There was talk about a museum. In theory, if the seniors leave the old Senior Center, the city council could choose to have an agreement with the Historical Society at that point and let them use the old Senior Center. There could be space at the new community center. It's something that we could get into the final, not part of this plan, but when we would do the designs for the building, those are the types of conversations, but it wasn't off the table. And we've actually reached out to the Historical Society, I've talked with a couple of their members, but we made sure that we preserved over at Allen York Park, the area that would be part of that proposed lease that the city ministry.
How big is that modular?
Twenty-one hundred square.
That was pretty big, wasn't it? Yeah.
Two thousand one hundred square.
Yeah, that's pretty big.
Mm-hmm.
So that should be good. Is it, it's in pretty decent condition, because we had talked about moving that somewhere else in the city?
Well, not according to the Historical Society, it's not. We have kind of a difference in opinion. I would say.
I'm sure everything can use upgrading in Allen York Park.
Yeah, so from a planning level, yes, we have preserved space for the Historical Society, and we even showed the space behind the building, which is currently just like gravel area being eventually improved into a parking lot that could be used for that modular building. We also preserved two other buildings that are part of the old Public Works Center, what they call the old sewer garage, because with this large of a park, you are going to need maintenance equipment over there. And so by preserving that infrastructure that we already have, already kind of gave us a parks shed area where they can store equipment, materials, so they're not having to transport all of that back and forth from the boats.
And then on the map, there, inside of all of the parking lots, there's a bunch of green circles. Is that supposed to be tree coverage?
Yes.
So we're adding trees to an already existing parking lot?
Well, we'll be recontouring, re-leveling, re-grading that, and yes, then we have to provide tree candy.
And how are you going to fit boat trailers in between massive trees?
Well, you have to remember, this is a very large scale.
Yeah.
There are boat trailer parking areas on the south side of the site in this area. And this is artistic rendering, it's not the exact size of footprint. But yeah, the, as we designed it, there would be room for the trailer, the boat trailers to go.
I think the short answer, Councilmember Baldwin, is very careful.
We're trying, we're trying, we're trying to maximize the space. We're looking at maintaining thirty to forty
Trailer.
Trailer stalls.
Yeah.
And are we going to do the whole arm or boat launch or paying order? You know, is that going to be like an access gate?
Yeah, so down here, oops, down in this area, which is why we kind of pulled the launch off, because we would be able to have a gate where people would have to basically pay to enter the boat launch. They would launch their vehicles and then they would go back out from that pay area. But that would all occur off of the right-of-way, so you don't have those types of vehicular circulation issues that we're currently experiencing.
Well, so are you telling me that you're trying to buzz that all up?
Yes, which is what the council, when we brought this back in February.
It's supposed to curve around.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does.
It's supposed to curve around.
Right here is West Taps.
Yeah, keep going, keep going, keep going.
It curves all the way around.
Keep going.
And then it comes on this side.
And then go up.
And then goes up.
They can go up.
Yes.
Yeah, perfect, yeah.
Okay.
It's just, it's, we're trying to show an area on a map this big right now, I mean, you're looking at. But yes, so what we've done, a couple of things is, one is we've, we've made it where the vehicular parking is only a right-in, so they, it helps with that efficiency. And then the exit for the boat trailer parking would be at the current West Taps, finally, Bullar intersection. There would be a third leg, a new leg, that would be just the exit for the boat launch. We wanted to make sure that this was not just a pretty picture. So we actually engaged Shake Hard Jewel Engineering to perform a whole traffic study on both safety operations, the design of the roundabout to make sure it works for boat trailers, fire trucks, buses. And they've done a whole multi-page report, if you would like. You know, we're in the process of finalizing that report. Once it's finalized, I'm glad they send it out. They've looked at the traffic operational issues, the safety issues, and the design issues. Because I remember we've gone back and forth between the architects and the engineers, and this is what works for both groups. And so we know that it's realistic, I guess, is the best way to say it.
I believe that Councilmember Baldwin has a question, we can't see her right now.
Yeah, can you guys hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My first question is, you had said when David closes the boat trailer, for example, when we have concerts going on, is there going to be a way to stop, I guess, boats from, you know, if, if they're at the roundabout, for example, and they're starting to want to go to the boat launch, will they already know? Or are they going to begin to queue up and then get backed up? And do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, when, when David closes the boat launch, it's closed for the entire day, and notices go out days in advance, and there's signs all the way down Veterans Memorial Drive and Locust saying the boat launch is closed. Yeah, so that's, that's something we just do at the park, that's something that's announced on the city website. And it's already what we currently do when we have the large functions in the park.
Well, and it's being a regular thing, like every Wednesday, that it would be.
Yeah, so every Wednesday, we start to know. Basically, every Wednesday through July and August, the boat launch is shut down on Wednesdays all day because of those other events.
Okay, another question, I can't see you guys at all, I can only see the PowerPoint. But I saw on your pie chart, I think it was right before this, it said Spray Park, and then it said, yeah, right there, it said Water Play, but then I thought Water Play meant being at the beach, but then when you went to the next slide, there was a, like a water, aquatic, I don't even know what that is. Is, so that's different than from just playing at the beach? On the left-hand side?
So we took it as two, Water Play is getting in the lake, splashing around, hanging out on the beach, and then specifically a Spray Park. So we kind of got both of those. So what we identified as a Spray Park and also kind of recontouring where the current kind of picnic shelters are, to create a true beach, so that, you know, people don't have to kind of jump in the water. They can, if they have any sort of mobility issue because they're seniors or other issues, that they can just walk straight into the lake by having kind of a zero lift. It's basically just what you would see in a traditional beach at the lake, where you just walk in, it's like this vertical drop that's two or three feet tall. And there's some good reasons for that, one being when it's maintenance, when we don't have a bulkhead to maintain. That's one of the things on our maintenance side that we have to maintain, and that bulkhead right now is already having problems. So this was a creative solution of getting this out of maintenance costs and improving access and improving functionality.
I believe Councilmember.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so how many stalls are in the current boat trailer working launch?
I mean, there's thirty, twenty?
Thirty-three. Okay, so I, I've just had a significant contact with my constituents, and I received three very positive remarks about boat, voting and trailer parks, right? So I probably talked to over twelve hundred constituents in the last couple of months. And I didn't hear any complaints, and I heard three very positive things about, they were glad it was back open, there was plenty of parking, they felt like, and these were people who were, you know, felt like they used the boat launch a lot. I'm wondering, has anybody else on the council received feedback of any form regarding the boat trailer parking? Because I was shocked that I didn't hear more of that.
More positive or more?
More negative. I was waiting for more negative, because I was under the impression that we had severely cut the trailer parking down. But I heard very little of that from people in Bonnie Lake.
Because you were talking to people in Bonnie Lake, people that are upset.
Let me see, I represent Bonnie Lake.
Liquid people be upset over it.
Right.
It's less traffic for the people that live around there. I mean.
Well, I can personally say when I would go to the park, that I would wear a catcher's mask and a chest protector, because I thought people would be throwing things at me, but I actually got positive response. In fact, all of the response that I got from the concertgoers and people on the outside seemed positive. And, you know, I can put a lot of that off to the fact that it was a face-to-face conversation. You know, they're just kind of doing the glass ceiling and stuff. But still, it surprised me that it was substantially positive, which I appreciated. He said, no, I haven't gotten anything to myself.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to weigh the, the current orientation and the priorities for the park, and I'm like, well, maybe, yeah.
So the, the thought was, is that by, by giving it its own line, we have that access control that we currently don't have. We're not losing the boat trailer parking, we're just kind of shifting its location. And we're actually providing more parking by dedicating the area on the north side of the roundabout for the sports field. And one thing that's, we are adding some parking here, but we're also adding another smaller parking lot down here that would work both for Bonnie, it's more centrally located, that would work for the main park and also for a larger event if you apply. So I, I, for our daily operation, we're making sure that we're not losing that parking. And then for events, we're going to have even more parking, because we want to repurpose those lanes for additional parking.
And I'm sorry, Councilmember, I believe Councilmember Evans had his hand up, and then I believe Councilmember Baldwin had another question as well.
I know this is all preliminary, but what is the net increase to parking there? I should have the net number for you. I can say that this adds up to over three hundred stalls.
Okay.
So it's, it's quite a bit, it really adds up when, and that's actually, it's interesting that it's in, in that same ballpark for both Allen York and In Town as currently drawn up. But it's definitely a significant increase. And as Jason was saying in there, especially with Allen York, you know, having that additional parking there at the border site where the current, if you can, facility, that's going to add to it all. And then I think that, I think it's okay to say that, as far as the question of how well things are currently working, with the boat trailer parking, what we heard from staff is that really the current capacity is working quite well, which, when we were trying to figure out how much space should we devote to at least having the flexibility being used for trailer parking. So that's how we scoped that out, is that it's comparable to what it's currently on offer, it's just a different location.
We, we maintain. And generally on the same subject, I'm sorry, Councilmember Baldwin, I just have a question for, I think you, Kelly, do we have any data as far as the parking issues that we had over the summer over at Allen York Park with boat trailers?
I can get our enforcement data, not tonight, but I can get it.
Yeah, I appreciate that as well, thank you. Councilmember Baldwin?
Well, since this is a twenty-three-page PowerPoint that we had to ask questions until the end, is there a possibility of getting a copy of this? Because I really tried to compartmentalize my questions as it went through, but I, I can't move through the PowerPoint and go back to things.
We will gladly email out, if you have a link, if you'll email that link out to us.
Okay. And then my other thing is, I think on page ten, so just the previous one, yeah. And maybe I'm just not seeing it right, but between the, well, the yellow slice, what is that?
Oh, that was just kind of our dividing of north and south. I don't know on the pie chart.
Oh, little pie chart? I'm sorry, on the pie chart or on the?
It's, it's on the, it's, it's on the pie chart.
Oh, okay. The in-ground planting's perhaps?
Well, one that's blank, there's three yellow slices.
There's a blank one, it's yellow.
Between pickleball and in-ground planting.
We can get that for you.
In support. So what for the plan versus, and pickleball, there's kind of a missing one.
Okay, we'll, we'll get you, we get you even, that's follow-up, just probably just a few comments, so we can give you specific comments.
Yeah.
Okay, I have one comment and one more question. Is, I love the idea of a pump track. My, my neighbor, my seven-year-old has used pump tracks at Swan Creek off of Portland Avenue. It'd be, and it'd be really cool to have a pump track, you know, at Midtown. I think the other thing is for Midtown, is there, was there not going to be any kind of like multi-use sports fields out there?
The, the current, the current plan is no, because of the other areas that we're providing those, and then focusing other sports-type facilities at Midtown Park.
Hmm, okay. I, I only say that because the one at Allen York, for example, the new one, even, even if we were to, you know, provide a lot of sports opportunities out there, it's just such a high-traffic area already, especially when sports are going on. Those sports are going on at the same time that people are at the beach, you know, that, that tended to be very much of a clog. And then I know that soccer fields are potentially going to be going into the Reed property still all up in the air, but other than that, and then school use fields, I, I don't know that there is a whole lot of multi-use opportunities in Bonnie Lake.
Well, we, we are proposing to add one more at Allen Park, kind of what's currently Field Four, which is kind of a somewhat-used baseball field, would be repurposed as a multi-purpose field with two baseball bases.
In the same manner as Ballpark Five.
Yeah, we look, we kind of model off of Field Five.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Baldwin.
Okay, so back to the Allen York Park. Yeah, that one. So now you have the Ballpark Four parking lot that we're currently using as boat trailer parking. Is that going to continue to be trailer parking? Or is that going to, is the trailer parking moving over and then this is going to be park parking?
Yeah, the, that, that parking lot that's currently used for the trailers would kind of be reformatted and used for Field, New Field Four parking, because you want to have parking right next to the new field. And then the same number of stalls, that thirty to forty range, boat trailer parking stalls would shift kind of over to where the, basically, the, the current public works, the old City Hall site.
And are they going to put at the multi-Ballpark Four, essentially, are they going to put like restroom facilities for the players so that they don't have to walk all the way to?
Even, kind of, as.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be mandated, kind of like ADA, you'd have to have restrooms?
I don't think it shows it, but we, we just, we just show small restrooms. I don't think it shows them, but we, we just, we just show small restrooms.
Can we put additional, like, where the, where the trees are in the U-shaped outdoor concert area? Can we put under those trees, like, parallel parking or more angled parking? Because that was on the, um, how many, how many parking stalls do you think we're going to get? That parking lot looks pretty small behind the stage.
Well, this one is mainly for a couple of ADA parking stalls and then for the vans.
Right.
Right, so it's a smaller.
So we need more parking, like, all along that whole area.
Well, we're trying-
People aren't going to want to walk across the street and over the diner.
So here's part of-
Over the river and through woods.
So here's part of the challenge. Like I said, we always have constraints that we're working with. We did look at a couple of options of putting more parking on the south side of Allen York Park along that road, but it took up a lot of Allen York Park itself. You basically lose the green space to put in the parking lot. The second part of that is Allen, that portion of Allen York Park was acquired with an RCO grant in nineteen-seventies, which requires it to stay park purposes in perpetuity. If you were to do angled parking within the right-of-way, that's additional right-of-way take, which means we have to find ways to compensate back to the park system. So we tried to limit the amount of take, which is why we pulled the parking out of that area and created these two larger parking areas, which would involve eating up less. We, we looked at it, but we ended up taking about a third, to make it work, about a third of Allen York Parkway to put in the parking along the road. And you have some sight distance issues because of the way we're curbing it. So we can't just put it in there.
And then this multi-sport, is that going to also have, um, a softball for the girls?
Yes, that was the one thing that we missed on Field Five. So that's why I'd say it's modeled off of Field Five, but it would be, I think a couple of things would be different. We make the infield lines a little longer.
Yeah, and as the show here, it's a little bit larger. It's the double baseball version of that, of the single.
And again, this is, I mean, this is basically a mock-up of what we would be looking at. I mean, as you stated at the beginning, we're looking at multiple iterations on here to-
Well, you're not going to see every, that line in great detail. That's when we move from plan, and then the next phase we're going to do is, here's all the costs, if you want to move forward with it kind of as a whole, and then as we do individual projects, that's when we would get all the way down to the fine-grained of showing every little line for every little facility.
I mean, you described this as rich, but you haven't reached the budget level. You know, you've got one little hurdle to, uh-
It's a twenty-year plan, and we don't- That's why we've also tried to do reading things versus all on your end.
Okay, I mean, we do have another discussion on it we need to go to, but Councilmember Swann?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And there's one comment, I join Councilmember Baldwin in finding more uses at Midtown. Yes, kind of the first time I heard we're having some significant restrictions out there, with the tree canopy and all of that. You know, I'd like to, folks, to keep in mind that is the, you know, in my mind, some of the most expensive real estate we have, and we need to maximize the utilization of it, whatever we can do for that. So that seems to be kind of the core, where there's a lot of people, a lot of traffic, you know, roads and everything, businesses and all, that they can really work together for that. So I'd really be interested to see if we end up finding some, you know, it's just a, you don't need to answer it now, but it's just-
And in addition, incorporating a security homelessness issue with, say, the trees that are out there right now.
Well, that was one of the theories behind doing the disc golf.
Is what, we hit them with frisbees?
Well, not that people walking. So, so people, the one thing, the one thing that homeless can't do not like is eyes. And so one of the theories by having the disc golf is those forested areas, areas are going to be basically policed by people who are playing disc golf. So if they see things starting to get weird, they're going to contact with the city. So it's a, it's a way of activating that forest canopy in a very low intrusive way, but still provides that kind of eyes-on-the-street type thing.
And lighting.
Yes, and lighting, we talked about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
All the trails will have, all the paths will be lighted, so people can do it. The question I had to the council, I'm just going to hedge, do you want us to show a possible aquatic center there?
Absolutely.
Okay.
End of our talk.
Councilmember-
We'll say you spilled too, one somewhere, like that one.
This is all finding Danny, but how are we finding?
So, so next, there's, this is a multi-averive process, as I explained when we signed the contracts. So once we kind of have the larger concepts done, we've already have contracts with FCS, and we have Scott, his team, and Steve under contract to do cost estimations. So we're going to come back with, this is what it's all going to cost, but you've got to remember, it's a twenty to twenty-five-year plan.
I didn't ask how much it was going to cost, I asked how we were going to-
That's part of it, we're going to first have, we have to figure out how much it costs.
Too much is probably, I mean, more than two hundred thousand is all we've got, so, I mean, we're-
Well, we're going to be recapping-
We're a Ferrari shop in here on the Honda budget.
We're going to be recalculating parking impact fees based on FCS's work. And then that's where that conversation comes on, how do the funding sources come together?
Right, and the park impact fee is going to be on a shrinking availability of built-ful land, so that's a regressive impact anyway.
It's part, you can't ever do a hundred percent. So we already know that it's not a hundred percent park impact fees. But that's, once we know the cost, then we begin to have those conversations with the council. And the prioritization of the improvements we want to do.
And as far as paying for it, has the same sort of type of partnerships like we have with MRAC and private sector coming into this that might be able to help us?
It could be, there's a variety of options.
Okay. Councilmember Swann?
Yeah, so all the city property that is, like, adjacent to this building over here, was it considered at all for development or park or anything as far as that?
Right now, the, the current comprehensive plan that was adopted by council shows, um, kind of the downtown area over here as kind of having a small park in it, but also having other kind of retail and residential development on it. Um, we thought and discussed how we were going to approach that area, and because there were so many questions up in the, up in the air, that area wasn't pulled into it. Um, we would recommend waiting till we get to the comprehensive plan, um, because we can then talk about that, that area and how it fits into the larger comprehensive plan. It could be that it needs to be added to the park system in a greater or smaller detail, um, but it also could be a relief valve if we need capacity for housing. So, um, that's why it was pulled out, because we thought it was just too premature. There hadn't been council kind of discussion specifically on that. So the long-term thinking is we would do the comprehensive plan update. In the center plan that the council adopted in seventeen or eighteen, there's a small little kind of conceptual that shows some mixed use, residential and a small little park. Um, but we didn't know if that's where the council wanted to continue with. So as part of the comp plan update, we'll be talking to the council generally what they would like to see kind of in that downtown four area. Um, and then once the comp plan is updated, kind of having a more specific question about master planning that site. Um, and there's multiple options, the council could master plan it themselves, we could put out an RFP for that site. Um, we just felt like it was too premature to dedicate it to a specific use, knowing what we have to do with the comprehensive plan and other priorities and goals of the city council.
Okay. All right, oh, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for taking this. Great, buddy. Uh, thank you for, for all of this, I appreciate, I think you guys have done a great job. I do have a couple of concerns. Um, I like Allen York Park, the deal there. Midtown, I'm a little concerned about, same as Councilmember Swann and some of the other councilmembers.
And the mayor.
And the mayor. Uh, I, I liked the plan that they had from twenty-fifteen. I don't know if there's something that could be, you know, work those in together a little bit more. I know you're not going to get everything, obviously, so I'm okay with that. I'm okay with changing that plan, but I kind of would like to see a little bit more of that plan in your plan.
Yeah, the, the challenge of the twenty-fifteen plan is it didn't assume the master drainage plan. So if you were to actually pull up that master drainage plan, the ball fields are right here.
Well, that's not a problem, those, we talked about the recovery.
The stormwater ponds?
Yeah. We did, we back there.
Yeah.
The closed, did it?
To vault those stormwater ponds-
Not that big of a deal.
Would be millions.
This is already a hundred, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Twenty-one percent more.
No, it wouldn't be one percent more, so, but I think that, that was, that was part of the problem with the twenty-fifteen plan, and also the other part that we're struggling with is we have to keep some tree capacity clearing for the stormwater pond extension, at least and through the end of twenty-twenty-four. Um, because, under the development agreement that's still effective until twenty-twenty-four, the, some of the stormwater from the residential development to the other side, that pond basically gets extended and a little bit goes on to the residential side to provide the stormwater capacity for that residential development. So we have to kind of hole a certain amount of acreage out to account for that future clearing. We could get with Scott, and if the council really wants us to try to find a way to add a sports field, um, so then you have another field here, we can, we can look to do that. But we're trying to also minimize the, kind of, we're, we're playing with a lot of different ratio, but we can, we can-
I understand, I think, I think that, as Councilman Swann said, that is the premier area for the city, for, for the parks, and if you want, you know, things to be happening at the park and using, getting people to come and purchase things and go to stores, go to restaurants, and all those types of things, then you have those competitions or whatnot there. And so to me, it just makes sense, where we were trying to move some of the fields and stuff from Allen York Park to Midtown, because it makes sense as far as traffic flow type stuff. I understand we have some other issues, I just, we just throwing it out there that I would like at least to look at it. Um, I understand that, you know, it may not happen, but I think I need something we need to be sure that we're looking at, because we're struggling for a priority.
Yeah, mine as well. I would always say make your plans what you want them to be, because you are doing a twenty-five-year plan, you don't know what the future looks like ten years from now, it could be drastically different than it is now. It could be feet away, but that's when the prioritization-
Forty acres of tree coverage instead of twenty-two.
Yeah. Um, but that's why I think that it's a prioritization. You know, then we pick what we have available for resources, and we prioritize those improvements that are the needs, and then we move to the ones. And we prioritize that, we've tried to design the plans with fifty days, so you can do bits and pieces without having to take down a whole park simultaneously.
Yeah, okay, everybody is good. Well, we already have part of the problem solved as far as the aquatic centers concerned, the stormwater thing we work at every morning here.
Disc golf in the summer, swimming in the winter.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor, sounds like a retreat discussion to me.
Put a heat pump in there.
I'm sorry? Sounds like the retreat discussion to me.
Oh, it does to me.
I'm Deputy Mayor, that.
Yeah.
Well, you would be, this would be approved before then.
Okay. All right, well, let's, uh, let's move on to our, well, first, let's go review, uh, councilmen. It says, Councilmember, a review of councilmen.
Oh, we had two mistakes.
Okay, correct. All right, thank you, now we can move on to our discussion item. Uh, Ms. McDonald, would you read that for us?
The council has a public hearing, oh, sorry, council had a public hearing on October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three on AB twenty-three dash one twenty-eight, resolution three-one-seven-eight, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Bonnie Lake, Pierce County, Washington, adopting the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-nine six-year transportation improvement program. And this is for discussion only tonight.
Okay, any discussion on the matter? Going once. Going twice, and I will make sure, Council, oh, we can see you, Councilmember Baldwin, hello. Any, any discussion on the matter from you? Okay, I, we got it, Councilmember, oh, okay, Councilmember Swann.
Yeah, so one thing that I'm sensitive with these transportation plans are, um, is that they're, inside these plans, there's a, uh, the, the need to take property in order to increase some intersection size, sizes. And I'm trying to realize, you know, when we, when we approve these, I get it that this is kind of like one of those things, like, yeah, yeah, we have a plan, but I'm looking for like a bright line that I would, that I should, like, actually consider going to the constituents that are affected by that and ask them for their feedback on, on, you know, hey, do you really, what happens when we take and make this thirty lanes with a turn lane, right? Or we try to put a roundabout here and we pull, uh, part of the property into the roundabout? I mean, how do we know when to start engaging with our constituents? Because it shouldn't be right when, I'd hate for it to be like the night before you have to vote on something, right? Because I would like them to be able to think about it, engage, uh, you know, with staff and council, and give them time to understand it, because taking a property is pretty serious.
No, absolutely, I mean, I made certain answers. Um, so are you suggesting table on this matter, or are you?
No, I, I think, I think, I'm just asking, because there's a lot of stuff in here that we're not going to go take somebody's property next year.
Right.
Well, how do we, how, I'm just asking, how will I know, right, when? Are you just going to give the constituents enough time to give us feedback?
Before the final plan, before the engineering comes back, the council has to, you know, approve the concept.
Okay. And, and-
And as you get out there and engineer, then you don't know what property you're taking, right? You know the basic concept according to that.
Right.
If I, if I could, just, and Councilmember Swann hit the nail on the head, is, is there's kind of, at least from the engineering perspective, when we do these projects, there's kind of a parallel track here, because the design does inform, you know, obviously, how much property may or may not be impacted by a particular project. Typically with these transportation projects, we do thirty, sixty, ninety, and then final design, percent, and then final design. Often we're getting out there and talking to residents, maybe doing project, open houses, what have you, at the, at the thirty percent level. When we're into that point where we know this is basically the roadway alignment, these are the planned improvements, whatever it is, that's a great time at that thirty percent level to start talking to people, getting those comments, and then looking at alternatives, perhaps to move some things around or reduce things, remodel the traffic flows, all that kind of stuff, uh, so that we can hopefully get rid of any impacts altogether, or at least work to minimize it as much as possible. So that's my initial thought on that in response to your question. Uh, you know, I, I don't think that there is too early of a point, but oftentimes with the way funding comes together, uh, and the way these plans tend to change over time, which, again, this tip isn't a commitment to build in this order, it's just a commitment to, this is kind of the priority, additional study and design as we move forward. These plans will change, uh, but again, I would say the most optimal time is right, as soon as we can in that initial design effort, get out there and talk to folks and repair.
Now, procedurally, we're, we've already had a public hearing on this matter, right? But I'm concerned about the messaging that went out there, or published, because traditionally, we don't have anybody that comes in and actually comments on these things. But, uh, you know, where are they, where are they getting the, the information that they had the opportunity to come in and publicly talk about this? Is it on our website?
For the, for the tip itself?
Yeah.
So there was information that's posted on the website, there's, that's the primary, I believe, mechanism for advertising these.
And in the newspaper, there was a notice.
And that's, that's correct, this one was actually published in the newspaper as well.
And was it an article, or was it like some people do kind of tuck it away in the want ads and the?
It's a public notice, sorry, it is.
There we go, yeah, okay.
In the packet.
Yeah. Okay, Councilmember Baldwin?
Yeah, so I apologize for the public opinion over twenty-fourth, but I'm looking at the millions of dollars, and I'm seeing like grants, loans, bonds, developer mitigation, operating revenue, gas tax. So are these, are these items that the state is requiring? Or is this something that, you know, part of their comprehensive plan where they're going to be requiring all of these? So are they going to help with the funding, help with the studies? Or is this kind of, you know, millions and billions of dollars that we're going to have to come up with some revenue to put in our budget at some point?
Yes.
Yeah.
Let me explain, though, I, so there, there's a couple of different things going on here. The actual tip itself, the six-year plan is required by the RCW. The RCW requires that each city prepare one of these, it's updated. I think they, in, in the, in the RCW, they refer to it as a perpetual plan, meaning that it's updated every year and looks at the next six-year window moving forward. The different sources of funding that you see listed on there are, are potential funding sources. Again, there's no commitment here that they'll use this or that, it's just, these are the potential sources to fund this particular project. Typically with tips, you're always going to end up with projects that value more than the available funding you have. That's just the nature of the way these plans come together, and it's the nature of what we're seeing when we actually get to the point where we're talking about construction, is that these projects are getting more and more expensive. is that these projects are getting more and more expensive. What we hope to be able to do is by seeing this list of projects, seeing the total amount, and then as we march through the six-year timeframe, we know what kind of revenues we're seeing, we can identify that delta, and then we know what it is that we need to make up with grants and other alternative funding sources.
I'd say 100%.
Where we can, we'd love to, absolutely. For instance, you know, our, our infrastructure development team just won a significant grant fund to do the complete design for improvements at Angelina and Veterans Memorial Drive. So that was almost $600,000 we went out and got as free money. And so that was a huge win for us, we definitely want to maximize that more moving forward. So we're always looking at those, at those sources, to be able to offset and be able to mitigate, I'd love to be able to mitigate using any kind of city revenue at all, but,
yeah.
We'll see.
For sure, okay.
Yeah.
And I think, uh, Councilman.
Oh, Council, uh, Councilmember Baldwin?
Oh, my question, where to go? Okay, I typed it up. Yeah, I was curious, I know that you said, and I know everybody is saying, you know, once we put out things in the, the paper and notify people, but really, let's be honest, people are busy living their lives, and so, you know, they're, they're not going to respond until, you know, it infringes on them in some way. And so my question is, kind of off of what Councilmember Swatman was saying, is that once engineering and things like that go on, I mean, it, will the council actually know if there is some sort of issue where private property is needing to be, I guess, taken?
Yes.
We have the note on that.
Yeah, there, there's, uh, due process is the, is probably.
Comes to CDC pretty much.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's not something that's just missed and overlooked, and we vote on something and, and we just don't even know or realize that something like that has happened, so, okay, good to know.
Seems that's something you might be able to comment on.
Yeah.
Kelly wouldn't let it happen.
Before a city is allowed to condemn property, it has to come to the city council for a vote on ordinance authorized condemnation. That often happens even if people are willing sellers, because there's advantages for them to sell under threat of condemnation versus just not under the threat of condemnation. So if there's a take, it generally comes to the council for that ordinance to authorize the condemnation.
All right, thanks. All right, Councilmember Baldwin?
On category E, the trail projects, could that money potentially, because it's like walking trails, bicycles, all of that, so can some of that money potentially go into the parks that we just planned, that we just looked at tonight, to kind of help with the walking trails, the bike trails, the parks, all that kind of stuff?
So certainly where there's some crossover in between projects, we could certainly leverage funds to accomplish the goals above. So it just depends, it's very much on project-specific basis. But yeah, good fun.
Okay. So we do have this on next week's agenda? Correct? Consider it then? Or am I reading this right?
It'd be on the 28th, next week, it's a workshop.
Okay.
This is a workshop.
Yeah, it is next week.
It is next week, okay. All right, saying no more business, we are adjourned, thank you very much. No, we're on the $5,700. Uh, it was, John, I thought it was $4,700.
Our Christmas card bill was $600.
Christmas card? Yeah.